Meeting to order for the Board of Tre- Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge. Our meeting on March 25th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Franklin Blackwood.
Here.
Helen Beck.
Here.
Recklow.
Here.
McNally.
Here. If we can stand.
They moved it on, it's behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, proof of posting, Lisa?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the MSU Community Center, Cambridge State Bank, Cambridge Post Office, and the Village website.
All right, thank you. Looks like we're good to go. Public comment. I see three people in the audience. Does anybody wish to make a statement at this time?
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Lund. How are you? Anybody else? No greetings, salutations. Okay. All right, we'll close this portion of the meeting for public comment and moving on. Approval of the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
All right, any discussion necessary? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, carries. Reports, I'll start off. Last meeting, we had heard about the quilting. Is this a club or an association? It's just a group.
Women.
So, I came down here. I did not want to just, you know, put something in with names. I wanted to see how they felt. So, I met with ten ladies here a couple days ago and had a chance to talk with them about the work that they had done in helping us with our flag. And I have to tell you, they were all, and there were ten of them, they were all quite taken with Cody Garcia. He has made quite an impression with them. He was very polite. They thought he was a remarkable young man and for bringing the flag in. He showed it to me, and there's going to have to be some additional work done because it is whipping in the wind. So, he doesn't know how that's going to work, but we did have a positive report on one of our village employees from the quilting association here in Cambridge. And I just wanted to, you know, call out Cody for taking care of that for us. So, did a good job. We'll move on. Library board.
I'm trying to find. Here we are. So, I will echo from the library board or from the library director also. Kudos to Cody and Jay. Cody and Jay saw or worked really hard. There's an issue with the hot water and a smell going up to the break room, which is at the front and the hot water heater stuff's in the back. They've done a lot of work and, like, they shocked it. And knock on wood, it seems to have solved that, the issue. And Samantha made a comment to me when I was volunteering at the library last week about how Cody is making sure to go in and double check and, you know, just see how everything is. He maybe comes in about twice a week just to see that everything is as it is. So, there's another kudos to our staff from the library. Let's see. We got, we did the agreement with Safer's Communities for the box for the Narcan, so that will be going in. And when they do it, we're going to plan to do some sort of community event around that for training. So, that would be available. That would be a library program that would be available for everyone in the community to come to. That's sort of the plan or what they're hoping for. The drive-up window, we got a quote on that, and I think we're going to be moving forward with the drive-up window. There's a couple things that Samantha still needs to double check, but we're hoping to get that done this year. Let's see, we looked at Jefferson County boards. That's all good. We're hiring for a new person in the library. There were a lot of people who had applied, and there were a lot of really good qualified people who were applied, so Samantha was excited about that. And that's about it. Our next board meeting is going to be April 9th.
It seems to me, Paula, that we've had a problem with the warm hot water on the one side of the building.
That was the break room that we were talking about. Yep.
And it's, the heater is on the other side. I remember Ted something years back.
Yep. They've had a problem with it ever since they moved in. Don't know what it was, but what Jay and Cody did was they completely drained and then shocked the hot water heater. And in doing that, it got rid of the smell. And then the hot water itself also seems to be hotter as it's traveling up there, so they don't have that issue anymore. So, we don't think, knock on wood, they're going to need to put in an on-demand hot water heater up at the front for the break room. Yep. Very excited about that.
All right.
I think that the issue may have been in the past discussed that it's not used enough. So, if it's stagnant, that can help. So, I think they'll keep a closer eye on it, like you said, now.
Yep.
Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you, Paula. Public Works update.
Tasks accomplished. They had a big water main break on the corner of Main and Madison intersection, so that was taken care of. They, I think, have a little cleanup work left to do, but the box came down and within the day, that was taken care of. Cleaned up after the storm damage trees, the wind. Tree Works removed a dangerous tree limb hanging over South Street. They trimmed an oak tree in West Side Park, a honeybowl was on South Street, and removed two hollow maple trees on Lawn Street. DPW also removed two dead trees that had some damage during the storms out at the Village Compost site at the entrance. They're continuing trimming terrace trees, which some took a beating again. They ordered six trees from the Cambridge Tree Project to be planted later this year. Cross training so that everybody is able to use the street sweeper. MSA on our GIS system updated our sidewalk program to reflect our ordinances. So, ongoing project, they're prioritizing sidewalks in town that need replacement or repair. Patching potholes as well as the potholes on the gravel part of Lagoon Road, filled those in. They did a controlled burn of the little pond by the library drive-through here. Cleaned that out. Repaired the F-450 driver's side axle. We received our final mandatory salt delivery for 2025 for road salt, and we had to place next year's order already. We are full. Cody has reached out to the state. They will buy any additional that we have, so we won't be on the hook to take more. They were able to pare down next year's order a little bit then as well. So, finished the workout on the speedboard by the elementary sign. Got the batteries in today, so that is finally working again. The DOT marked the right-of-way down at Highway 12 in the Park Road intersection for the "Welcome to Cambridge" sign. The property owner has been contacted. He's out of town, so once he gets back, he will meet with Public Works. Continuing tasks to be done. They do still have to fix the side axle on the passenger side of the F-450, working on this sidewalk and compiling the priority list. Continuing controlled burns of retention ponds as weather permits. Cody, I know, had just spoke with LBK, or with Lee Recreation to get, we've gotten one plan for LBK Park, but looking to get a second plan and then determine site preparation. Continue street sweeping, clean gutters and storm drains, and trimming out the terrace. Brush and compost pickup will begin again on the second Tuesday of April and will continue monthly until next winter.
Lisa, how do they keep track of potholes? Does somebody report it? They keep a log? Do they have a list of stuff they've come across, or?
I don't know for sure. I know our GIS system, they can be putting all this information about the roads, and then it helps them when they have to do their annual reports for the state on the, so I'm assuming it's all in the GIS system. Some may be complaints, some may be just that they find.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Lisa, on our yard waste, we now have that open? People can drop things off?
Mm-hmm.
Did, that, did you get a call, Lucy, from somebody that was, because I told them to call you. I didn't know for sure when those hours kicked in. Somebody had wanted to know if they could drop stuff off.
Somebody did call the day before it was opening, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I did do a Facebook post on that.
Okay.
And the brush pickup.
So, now people can bring stuff in? When? What days?
Let me look at my Facebook post, because it's real specific.
Yeah. We did do, like Lucy said, on the Facebook page as well as a press release was sent to the paper.
Yes. So, compost site hours are Tuesday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, open all day. Sunday and Monday, closed. And it opened on March 14th, 2025. And brush and compost pickup will begin the second Tuesday in April and continue the second Tuesday of every month until December, weather permitting. And then in this post, there's some directions on how to have your brush or compost.
Okay. All right. All right. Any questions for Lisa? Okay, we'll now move to Village Office updates. Lisa?
Election preparation for next Tuesday's election. So far, we have issued 216 absentee ballots. 154 have been returned with 62 still outstanding, which is 60% of our registered voters have requested absentee ballots. There is in-person voting through Friday at 5:00 PM. We went to the nursing homes today, did our voting there. Election worker training and public test is tomorrow. Ongoing audit work, Lucy will address that more. The ad for bids for Springwater Alley have gone out. The bid opening is March 28th, so that will be on an upcoming Village Board agenda. I know Public Works has put together a list of what would be done if we don't do that project. We are hoping to get a Public Works committee in, but we're still waiting on a couple things. So, if not, we'll have that at the board meeting. Working with the sheriff's office, preparing for interviews to be held tomorrow for the open deputy position. There'll be nine individuals interviewed for that position. We did receive notification of receiving our Tree City USA recognition again for the 19th year.
Yes. Springwater, have we officially made the change to it be a street?
We have not officially made it. We've passed the resolution. MSA, because in all the documents out there, it was still as Alley. They did do the bid as Springwater Alley.
Okay.
But we will change it. It doesn't give us access to.
I mean, it's just a name.
A street yet, yes.
It's just a name.
It's just a name.
So, when, do you know when that, do we have a goal for when that paperwork will be done?
I'm assuming after the bids are accepted and we decide what we're doing with the, you know, but he didn't want to have confusion and put Springwater Street if public documents out there still showed as Springwater Alley.
No, that's, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because it's just a name, but can we go ahead and?
Yes, we will.
So, what's involved with making that name change?
We have to give it to the communities, to the post office, and emergency management and so forth.
Is that it? Just letters to those telling them about the change?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, then would our goal be like to do that by the end of April?
Yeah.
Okay, super. The library would like to know so that they can start planning for them as well.
For their change.
Okay, thank you. End of April.
All right. Anything else for Lisa? Okay, we'll move on to Treasurers' Report and Bills. Lucy, let's start with bills.
Okay. First bill run in the amount of $25,997.63. Second run in the amount of $67,450.76 for a total of $93,448.39.
Okay. Help anybody here? Motion's?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill in the amount of $93,448.39.
All right. I'll second.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
Lucy, what are the big-ticket items on there?
Oh, I'm sorry I did do that. Sorry I did that this afternoon. First, I have the first one right here. First, there was nothing over, or there was one Department of Administration. It's the water.
Oh, the principal.
Loan for $13,000 was the only one over $5,000 in the first run. Second run was...
I think there was a big one for like $50,000.
There was another loan payment in the second run.
The 50. So, this, I did that check today. There was a $50,000 check. Can I just have the whole pile?
Yeah, you'll know. It was another loan payment.
Yep, another large loan payment. Give me just a sec, so the second one would be on the bottom.
Nope.
Nope, it's on the top. So, that was a rather large one. Give me just a moment. So, $50,382.50 was to Associated Bank, and that was for our water, water system. It's a loan that we have, and that was for principal and interest. And so, that was the big one.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, Chris?
Water system.
For Well 3.
Oh, okay. All right.
Right? No.
No, that one is not. That's an older, that's an older.
Associated Bank. Water system revenue refunding bonds. This is from 2015. So, this is a loan from 2015 that we are still paying off.
So, that'd be Well 2, right?
Probably. So, speaking of that, one thing I just began, just off the top, we'll go ahead and prove the vote, but is a list, having a spreadsheet and a list of all of the loans. We don't currently have them all in one place.
Okay. Chris, concerns?
Well, I just would like some more information on what we're paying $50,000 for. Do we know what it is specifically?
It's a loan, it's.
It's, it's a loan from 2015. I don't.
How much do we still owe?
I can get you that information. I don't have that offhand.
All right.
That'll be in the spreadsheet from Brian.
Mm-hmm.
He'll have the information.
All right. Others? I'm going to flip. Chris is going after 50. I've got two really, really small ones. I noticed that there was a check restitution for damaged property for $20. What was that about?
That's from courts. The court gives us restitution.
And then on that second run, there was painting supplies. I know what it is, but are they, they're going to do this now, starting what?
Next week, they'll be painting in here. The carpet is supposed to be in, in the next week or so. So, they want to get this painted before the carpet comes in. So, they've started patching the walls and so forth.
Okay.
And is it all going to be one color?
Mm-hmm.
No more action wall?
Tan. The leftover, thrifty leftover paint from the well.
Good, it's good.
Project. Cody measured, and it should.
Our constituents will appreciate us reusing instead of buying new.
Okay. Any other final questions? I get a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Franklin Blackwood.
Yes.
Helen Beck.
Yes.
Recklow.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, Lucy, Treasurers' Report.
Yeah, before I get into my Treasurers' Report, just for, is it okay to email all of the loan information to the board, all the details from Ellers and whatnot?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'll do that tonight. I'll get you all that information on that loan, and then I will also forward you, part of the audit process, I had to get some information from Ellers on different loans that we have out there. A lot heavy to do with Well Number 3. Several are older.
Now, Lucy, I'm, I'm not picking on you, but it's, it's one of these things where I think, I know myself, I got a little used to when you're, when you're signing for the bills. It has a breakdown of anything over $5,000.
And she.
And we haven't been doing that lately.
I apologize. I did do this today because she was busy working on audit stuff, and I spaced out.
So, I don't need to reinvent the wheel on, on this, but anything over $50,000 and kind of, before we sign it, it attracts our, puts our eyes on so we can actually look at the, the bill, so.
Absolutely. But I, I can give you that information. I'm still learning.
Yep.
About all of these loans, especially old ones, and what they're, and what they're for.
Yeah.
Most of them, from what I'm finding, have to do with water.
Yeah. So, again, that $50,000 would be coming out of the water.
Yes.
Sewer and storm water, you know, depending on which one it's for, it'll be coming out of that, those monies. So, it's being paid not by the taxpayers, but paid by the utility users, the rate payers. Correct.
Okay. What else do you have here?
So, last week was the audit. Audit work is still ongoing. Last week, I emailed my contact at Bowman Associates. I had just a few, everything has been done remotely. They had a snowstorm. They were supposed to come down on Wednesday and work in the office, but they got six inches of snow and asked if they could do it remotely, and which I, I said okay. And so, the only contact I've had, the hard part has been, is with the one person, Eric, and he's got a whole team doing requests. So, during one of my phone calls, I just had a feeling about out-of-scope work and what we went through kind of last year with Bowman. And then, then I thought about our quick phone call. It was literally a five-minute phone call, and the next day I talked to Lisa about it, and I emailed him and CCed Lisa, and just asked for them to let us know if we exceed the normal scope of work, and that I need that specific information to bring to the board prior to any additional work being done. And that was on Friday. And then Friday afternoon, after I had left, they responded that their team is and has worked on out-of-scope items such as the tax rule reconciliation, accruals, debt, several postings of proceeds and miscellaneous revenue, and it goes on and on. And then it said, these were all items that I mentioned on our call yesterday. In the call, he said they may have to go out of scope, but he didn't, he did not state that they already had. And then he said, these areas will need to be cleaned up so the village's records are audit-ready as outlined in our engagement letter. So, I have set up a teams meeting with Lisa and myself, with Eric Davidson, who is my contact there, and Joe Harrison, who is the signing principal, and he's the one in charge of overseeing billing, and that will be Friday morning, to discuss additional costs. I did ask today for a total cost and hours of work that has already been completed out of scope, and Eric was unable to provide that to me today on the phone. So, Will and I also grabbed the contract and the proposal folder out, and I reviewed all of that before I even talked to Eric, because again, I'm not familiar with contracts that were made three years ago. Obviously, each year, we resign a more simplified version, but I wanted to be familiar with that. And so, we'll report back, but from my point of view, what they've done so far is within a normal audit.
Right. Why would any of that be out of scope? I don't, I don't understand. I mean, how many audits have we gone through except for this company? Have people billed us other companies?
Some, if we've needed additional accounting work or reconciliation, but not, not this much, it doesn't seem. And we did go back and look at the previous, they weren't broken down in last year's invoices, you know. It just said out-of-scope work, but didn't.
They're going to need to give details.
Yeah.
Because we need to, thank you for being on top of that, Lucy, because we, we really need to push back on what they think is out of scope.
Yeah.
And if it is out of scope, give us the opportunity, rectify ourselves.
Yeah, and we've talked about that, the property tax reconciliation or, you know, tell us.
That's not included.
Tell us what you did last year. Show us so that we can do it, you know, so we know moving forward what we need to do. Don't just leave us in the, you know, black hole not knowing what you did.
And on the phone call, the one I had today, because I was off yesterday, the one I had this late morning, he did make a comment to me, this Eric, Eric David said, "Oh, I should have been sending you stuff as we went." And I'm like, "Yes," and I said, "Just so you know, you went, we went triple over our budget last year for your services, and so therefore I need full transparency before any additional work is done." And so, he know, he knows that.
Now, you're watching.
I'm watching.
Good.
And then when I read over that information this morning, again, and this was just a gut feeling, there was nothing verbally said to me that was clear and plain about additional fees or hours or anything in that phone call. It was very in-between the sentences, if, if I have to say so. And one of the things I read in the, I think it was the proposal, any phone calls over 10 minutes are billed. I didn't know that. And so, that is something when I'm on the phone now, I write down what time I get off, and I'm seven, seven and a half minutes. I'm like, "Okay, I gotta go."
Yep, good.
Which, we're in the audit process. We should be able to have.
Yeah.
Check-ins and phone calls with them.
Right. So, when does our contract up with these guys?
This is our last, our final year with them.
Okay.
Lisa makes a point that, you know, you can ask for their work papers, for work that they did last year or the year before that was beyond the scope of the original audit, so that you can see, all right, where, what were they analyzing? Where do they pull these numbers from? And they should be able to give that to you because we've already paid for it. All right. I think I told you, you know, phone calls, you know, when I was doing audits, I mean, yeah, you're, you're going to have so much, but those phone calls are a tenth of an hour, so it's every six minutes. So, if they come back with 10 minutes, they must be, I don't know how they're rounding it off, because, you know, one, one increment is six minutes. And it should be 12.
But if he says, "Let's do an audit check-in," and it's a 15-minute phone call, we shouldn't be billed for an audit check-in.
And most of them have been that. Most of them have been, and they've all been And most of them have been that, most of them have been, and they've all been quick. And one of the questions, just between all of us, I was on the phone with Workhorse, I have one final request that they're waiting for, and I'm a bit lost, cuz I gave them everything I have. And Workhorse was helping me look into it, had to do with some payroll payables. And Workhorse said, they have all the information, they can figure that out. And again, I'll work on that in the morning and get them what I believe it is. It has to be the last pay period of the year. But.
But how did you fix it last year?
I did ask.
Give us the example.
So for that particular request from them, I did ask them, can you please provide me? Because on a lot of the requests, they provided me last year's report or information that we provided, so that I had something to work off of. And, but this one I did ask, because they did not provide it, and he called me, ran around circles, confused me even more, and did not provide information from how, because at the last pay period, there's several ways you can do the payables, but you have to be consistent. So if you're gonna include that last, you know, however many days worked on the following year, then as long as you do that every year, fine. If you're going to include that all on, you know, twenty twenty-four, again.
Or split.
Or split, I just needed to know how it was done, and I was not given that information, and my seven and a half minutes was up, so it's tomorrow morning's problem. That's our, the final request, not to say that they might not come back with more, but as of right now, I did ask him how he thought it was going, and he said, your team is extremely responsive, cuz everything was submitted immediately.
Good.
As soon as I got stuff, I got it in as fast as I could. I think most days, every, all the requests were done before I left here. But, so we shall see. I just wanted to make that clear, because.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
That's what I.
Yeah.
We will also be requesting more detailed invoices and more often. Last year, we just received two invoices for the whole year. So when the second one came in December for an extra twenty thousand, it caught us off guard. You know, bill less monthly.
Yep.
All right, good. Well, they should give you any, if they're gonna exceed scope, let you know right away, here's what it's gonna be, here's what the issue is, and an estimate of the hours and the hourly rate. So you should be able to do that calculation, and, cuz they give us a quote in the engagement letter for the audit itself, so we ought to be able to get that.
And that we should get, I should get Friday, I would assume, at our meeting.
Okay, if you want me to sit in on that call, let me know.
Okay.
All right.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else for Lucy? All right, Lucy, thank you. We're going to move on to new business, start with the town of Oakland, the extra territorial development.
So this is in your packet. Oakland just shared it with us. They had approved the preliminary plat for this project back in twenty twenty-four, when the communities had met, it was discussed, some of the village didn't have many questions, concerns. They will be taking that up for final approval this coming week, or last week? No, I think I have that date wrong. They're looking at final approval. Just wanted to make sure we didn't have any more questions, concerns. They have been working with COWC, so they have approved the capacity and so forth for the project. I know this is the corner where a number of accidents have happened, so I know they've been working with Jefferson County on that as well. So they just wanted to run it by us again before they do their.
So the entrance and the exit for this particular property is gonna be off of A only?
Yes.
They're looking.
And all of those houses are only gonna have, is there one? Or is there, it looks like there might be a second one to the right, on the right side of it?
That does go through a lot, though.
A much smaller one?
Yeah, I don't know for sure.
Wow.
But it is not in her extraterritorial joint planning area in her IGA, but.
And when I look at this, I can't see it here, because there's a hundred home sites, correct? Weren't there a hundred?
Yes, I believe so.
I can't, the print doesn't, it's not that clear on this version. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, one hundred.
I don't think there's anything for us to do.
No.
Thanks for sharing.
Okay, and then let's move on. Recommendation from Water and Sewer Community, have Ellers create a water, sewer and stormwater budget for two thousand twenty-five at a cost of thirteen thousand, I think this is how they're going to be.
So, so the Water and Sewer Board unanimously recommended that we proceed with, with working with Ailers to create these budgets. The Water and Sewer Board, or the Water and Sewer and Stormwater Departments have not had a budget for, like, ten years. And so in order, with everything that's already on Lucy's plate now, her ability to create a water, sewer and stormwater budget would be very difficult with everything she's doing now. There's also more involved than just saying, hey, where did we spend money last year? And what are we doing this year? And then with this proposal, I don't know if you guys read it, but Ailers is also going to be doing a recommendation for, in the future, as we move forward, how we should look at rate increases for water and/or sewer. I know in the past, Water and Sewer Board was always reluctant to ever raise either rates. So then, when a rate did need to be raised, it was raised a lot, versus doing this smaller, more incremental raises, which I think would be easier to, more digestible. So that's one of the things, and in analysis of that kind of thing, is one of the other things that Ailers is gonna be working on, or giving us some information on that as part of this process. I don't know, Lucy, if you want to add anything?
No, basically, this, obviously, what I would be capable of is going over the budgets, well, the actuals, the budget compares and the actuals from the past three years, which is not sufficient for long-term planning. And they, this is just stuff more detailed, more in-depth, and being that our, our water system is, besides taxes, our biggest form of, you know, consistent revenue, it's really important to know what we have coming in, what we have going out, and what we need to try and set aside for big, large upcoming projects, because when it comes to water, sewer and storm, nothing is small, it's all.
It's all big.
Very big.
Yep.
And one very helpful thing, Ellers had done so much for the rate case, so a lot of the water stuff, they've already looked at. So it will be easier for them to put together the water aspect because of the well project.
And that is reflected in the quote, the price that was quoted us as well.
The one thing I didn't see in the notes, is it come out of the Water and Sewer?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's the one, okay.
What is the cost?
Thirteen thousand?
Thirteen, right?
Yep, thirteen thousand.
Two increments, right?
Two phases, yeah.
And I did.
It'll be paid in two increments.
Yes, and I did state that I wanted this, obviously, we can't rush it. They will be meeting most likely with the board, with the Water, Sewer, Storm Committee, with employees, especially Derek, during this whole process. But I want it implemented as soon as possible, I don't want it prolonged, would be my goal, so that we have it for the remainder of twenty twenty-five, and then we have the foundation for twenty twenty-six going forward. And speaking with Ellers, they did say, this is not something that we will have to do. This should, we, hold us for ten years, and they will review this with us at a very minimal cost if there are changes that we need to make, or we have some big things happen. But this foundation should set, should set our future for us, which we really, really need.
Okay. All right, anybody wanna make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve having Ailers create a water, sewer and stormwater budget for twenty twenty-five at the cost of thirteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Helen Beck.
Yes.
Crackler.
Yes.
Ryan Egg.
Yes.
Franklin McNally.
Yes. All right, passes. Okay, going to move on to some unfinished business and possible action. Start with a fire EMS commission update.
Did they send you the latest budget?
It's in the packet. I believe that's the latest, that's the latest I've received.
That budget was decided upon based on the higher of the two entities that submitted a budget? So it gave us some, some wiggle room, I guess? It's one point two.
So our current compared to the deer growth estimate?
And do we have any idea where we're at so far this year?
No.
I just one follow-up question from the commission meeting. Did they take action on any medical director?
I took, the only action item in reference to the medical director is I made a motion to pay our current medical director the money that was owed to him. And then some other incidentals, I think it came to around ten thousand dollars. There was mention of Janesville Mercy Hospital possibly being a, an option, but no motions were made to that.
Isn't he done the end of this month?
Yeah, I, I sent him a email asking what his intent was, and he, I sent a response, I think Lisa shared it with the group. He still intends on resigning, because he's expecting a lot more unity and open language and transparency from the commission, and he has not seen that, so.
Shouldn't the commission be having a meeting then to determine who the medical director is going to be as of April first?
That's correct, yeah, they should.
Fifth.
April fifth, yeah.
April fifth?
So we need a new director as of April sixth, so they can't leave the building.
And is Dave Schrader gonna convene a meeting then? I mean, is he, have there been conversations about this?
No, not to me. I reached out to the, to Alicia. I don't know when our next meeting is planned, or if we're even gonna have one. Christiana mentioned they, they weren't planning on having anything until after the elections.
But we can't, they can't.
I understand that.
Shirk their responsibility, so then their representative doesn't come. The other three municipalities are majority, we, we.
I got a feeling how this is gonna play out, Paula, is the commission president's just gonna give the interim director the authority to sign with Mercy? That's probably how it's gonna work out.
But.
And then we'll find out after the fact.
Despite seeing no contracts, no.
Right.
Documentation, yep.
And it's not, it's not a, the answer you wanna hear, but I know that's probably how it's gonna, how it's gonna play out. And then it's gonna be, the excuse is gonna be used, well, we were in an emergency situation, we had to, we had to make a call, we wouldn't be able to run a service after the fifth, so as the president, I, I made the call and told the director to sign with Janesville Mercy.
Is it on a month-to-month basis, then?
I have no idea what the parameters are of it, and I'm embarrassed to report that.
Nothing was reported as far as what costs were, what.
No, not at the commission meeting.
Not, not that was brought forward.
Not open or closed.
I just don't understand why we have to keep, like, taking this crap from the other three municipalities who are not doing their jobs. We're trying to be the, we're trying to be responsible. We're trying to do what's right by our constituents as a village of Cambridge. I don't know what more we can do.
Well, the part that, that I'm frustrated with is, we don't know what that cost is gonna be for the Janesville Mercy Hospital relationship, right? I mean, usually, you sign up with a doctor, he was giving us a really great rate, a thousand bucks a month for the, basically, the use of his license, that's, that's pretty generous. And then we couldn't manage to pay him. And now we're, we're talking about a relationship with, with the Janesville. What's that gonna cost if it's with an entire entity, as opposed to just, it's like a consortium of doctors as opposed to one doctor? So that's, that's problematic. Why is that problematic? Because a bulk of that cost is gonna come from Cambridge, right?
And that's probably what's most frustrating, is because we're, we're footing the largest part of this bill.
Yep.
Significantly more than.
It's been.
Lake Mills and Rockdale, and yet, they're dictating how we're reacting.
Christiana has no intention of having any, I mean, one of their board members is quoted as saying, I'm not going to discuss any more fire and EMS commission during, during our meeting. So I honestly think we're, we're sort of in a holding pattern until after the elections, and then we'll see where things could go. But at that time, you know, we got less than a week to, to figure out what we're gonna do with the service that we do have employed right now.
And we don't know if this contract is through the end of this year, if it's multi-year, if it's, we have nothing.
Do you know if you even have a contract? Because at the fire commission meeting, Mr. Williams was yet to have a conversation with Mercy. There was no commitment for Mercy.
Right. So no, we have no idea.
Chris, I.
I did have a contract with Mercy two and a half years ago, prior to going with the Madison physicians. So there should be some record of what that contract was and how much it cost.
Chris, I had a suggestion that I had shared with Lisa, and I'm not sure if it'd be more appropriate to do it after the election, when there's new, you know, EMS commission representatives from each village board, but I definitely, because things have not gone in the way that the village board here has tried to, you know, put in all the efforts to draft up a statement or some type of a communication to the community, so they know where the village board stands on this and things that, steps that the village board here has taken, especially because our name is on, is on there as part of the, you know, Cambridge area fire and EMS. I just, I think that would be helpful to have, whether we put it on our website or publish in the paper. Again, this is just an idea of something, a proactive approach, because I feel like this could be a continued long journey, and I want the community members to know how hard you guys have been working at making change and trying to improve things, so that was just a thought.
All right.
One other follow-up after our meeting last week. Us and Rockdale did pass the resolution, Lake Mills did not, Christiana would not have a meeting, so.
Do we even know if we have enough staff to run a service? Do we even know if we have enough staff to run a service? We've had numerous days where we have not had paramedics on the ambulance.
I think our, I don't want to be glib about saying this, but I think our particular EMS service is on life support right now when it comes to Manning.
How could we, how can, when the new people are elected, Lisa, when are they effective? The day after they're elected?
No, the third Tuesday of the month.
The third Tuesday of the month, all, that's when all the new
Whether the town or village.
Villages for sure, I believe towns are the same.
The third Tuesday of the month? Can we, like, call a four municipality meeting on the third Wednesday of the month and get everybody in the room and the new representatives from all the municipalities? And because this can't keep going on and on and on and on and on. We have to have some kind of resolution with it. And I don't know if this ties into then the next thing that's on our agenda with, I don't know if
Did Jane have any
...is proposing would be
There's a lot of questions about that, too.
I mean, because quite frankly, I think it would be a moot point for the foundation to get involved at this point before the election.
Yeah, it's also, it's problematic, too, because the Cambridge Foundation proposal is for all five municipalities and Oakland is reluctant to be part of it.
Understandably.
Right. So what I'm mostly concerned about is now, you know, we've all discussed this before, now it's going to, this is going to affect operations to, and, you know, it used to be our shining standard of response times, response times. But now it's a matter of which agreement that we have is going to, is it going to be Fort comes, you know, to take care of this elderly person in Cambridge? Is it going to be Lake Mills, Lakeside? It won't be Deer Grove because they've taken themselves out of the Mavis, you know, situation with us because they know what our staffing looks like. So it's, we really need to take a serious look at this because God forbid if there is a situation where we don't have the facilities to take care of our constituents, there could be legal ramifications to this.
Is there anyone at the state who, like, controls this stuff that we could ask them to get involved with us and help us to, like?
There's the stadium mess board.
I mean, to tell us, "You don't, you cannot run your own EMS service, you have to contract with someone else," or something, because we don't have an EMS service right now. Not one that can serve our constituents' needs.
We have a basic EMS service right now.
Which is not what we're paying for.
Correct. You're 100% correct. 100% correct.
And it's not even reliable because we don't even know what's staffed and what's not staffed. And in, what, ten days? We aren't even going to have, we aren't even going to be able to run it because we aren't going to have a medical license overseeing it.
I was going to ask if we have anything that we want to give to Chris for the next meeting, but if you don't have a next meeting scheduled, that gets to be pretty hard. I thought when, as far as the medical director, he had said that he'd be willing to come back, didn't, wasn't there something about that?
Yeah, but he needed some, he needed some assurances from the commission that we're not dysfunctional and he hasn't seen that yet.
He has yet to receive any of the information or cooperation that he's asked for.
And I can't argue with him there.
It's his license. I don't blame him. I'd walk away, too.
So if he walks away, what you're saying is that you think that they're going to contract with Mercy?
Well, I know that there have been talks with that. I have not seen any, you know, I get emails and usually when I get the emails, I send them to Lisa to distribute to you guys, but I have not seen any contract. I haven't seen, other than during the commission meeting, Mercy Hospital was brought up.
Mark, may I interject? Just informational, I went to the Lake Mills meeting the other morning when they denied the amendment, but they also had a discussion on their agenda item about a backup plan for Lake Mills. And they voted to contact Ryan Brothers to put in a temporary coverage in case there is no medical director on April 5th. So Lake Mills has already made a plan, contacted Ryan Brothers for coverage.
Can they work
Because it was brought up about the medical director and one of the board members said, "There's verbal, but do we have anything in writing?" And Mr. Schrader never answered. So they moved forward with a motion to contact Ryan Brothers for EMS coverage starting April 5th, assuming there won't be a medical director.
And they're going to
So just an FYI, that's what I'm asking.
And they're going to continue to pay.
And that person is the chair of the Fire and EMS Commission? So instead of actually calling the Fire and EMS Commission meeting and solving this issue, he's
They're looking out for themselves and that's it.
Right, they're looking out for themselves.
So they're going to continue to pay their IGA as noted, as
They're small amount that they have to pay.
But they're going to pay fifty dollars per capita for their 225 people in that seven percent equalized value portion, which is less than twelve thousand dollars for the entire year to cover their people for EMS coverage.
So they can afford it.
So just an FYI, I have a recording of the meeting if you want to validate any of it.
Wow.
All right. What do we want to do here with Chris? I mean, do we want to have him send a letter out to the other members of the commission asking for a meeting to be held here regardless of the vote so that we have a medical services director? Is this something we want to just do ourselves? Try to get them together so that they're in compliance with
They aren't going to, we don't have power to compel, we do not have power to compel EMS commission to meet. Han made that very clear when we did that one meeting with the five municipalities and asked to also have the EMS commission, the Fire and EMS commission, attend and be able to do actionable items as well. He made it, Han made it very clear, we cannot tell them to do that.
And then, you know, what I could do is I could reach out to the other commission members and, you know, if you have two people, you can have a, per the IGA, you can have a meeting. But I'd be hard pressed at this stage in the game to get another person to say they want to have a meeting.
Because we know it won't be Christiana, we can assume it won't be Lake Mills.
But how, so Christiana and Rockdale are okay if we don't have EMS service?
Rockdale, I don't believe at their last, I was at their last meeting and I'm trying to remember it exactly, but they didn't discuss the medical director issue from what I remember.
Yeah, Rockdale approved the budget and they approved the change to the IGA.
Is there any way we can do what Lake Mills did? And that is to go get somebody on our own just to protect our backside?
The thing is, it's added cost.
I know that, but
We don't have the luxury of twelve thousand dollars, you know, a year.
I think the bigger concern is who would do it? Who could we contract with? Our only legitimate option would be Lake Mills responding out of Deerfield, or not Lake Mills, excuse me, Deer Grove.
Deer Grove, it would have to be Deer Grove out of Deerfield is the only people we could go with. They're the closest ones.
And in light of the last year.
I thought, I was thinking this through and it was like, you know, we really sort of got painted in a corner on this whole situation, but maybe the best option, because Lake Mills did in fact sort of say, "Well, we're not going to approve this IGA change," which kills it for every other municipality because we don't like the wording.
Yep.
We don't like the wording of it.
The wording didn't they like?
I'm under the impression that they would like the wording to say, state something to the effect of each municipality can have their own private EMS service. And I don't have an issue with that. If that's the wording that they want in that IGA, then I'm willing to go back to the commission and say, "Let's change that wording."
Yep.
That gives us the autonomy to go with whoever we want for EMS service. The commission still is in existence, I guess oversight for a voluntary fire department that's very, very functional, but it gives each municipality the autonomy to pick their own EMS service since we're, so maybe that's what needs to happen.
But where we come into an issue, Chris, is whatever EMS service we go with, we're going to want them to have an ambulance here in Cambridge.
Yes.
Where are we going to house it?
Well, if the wording of the change of the IGA says each municipality can choose their, who they want to contract with for EMS services, our municipality will decide that. If we want to go with Deer Grove, we work out an agreement with Deer Grove to house the ambulance here.
But how can we house it in a building that the EMS commission is, the Fire and EMS commission is in charge of? That's where we run into the issue. That's the rub.
They'd have to sell it to Cambridge.
We'd have to sell the house, we'd sell
The commission would have to sell it to the village, right? To decouple it out of the government.
Or we could rent the space from the Fire and EMS commission.
Rent the EMS space because the commission would have to maintain the fire side.
Or could, if we did an agreement with Deer Grove, could we, they have an ambulance in Deerfield, could we just have that, no, that wouldn't work?
They prefer not.
They want to hear, okay.
That's there.
Got it.
There.
I mean, if we had to do that temporarily, that's one thing. I think permanently, having somebody in Cambridge is going to be really important.
All right, so we're getting back to this medical services director. What do we want to do? If we're out of, we have this person, they're going to be terminating services on, what, April 5th? There is no meeting scheduled. I don't think we want to be running bare. We either contract with somebody on our own, we try to get them back, try to get an explanation from the commission and its leadership as far as what they're doing with Mercy Hospital, but I don't think we can just, you know, push this thing down. I mean, it's, that's a requirement from what I understand.
We can send a strongly worded letter to the Fire and EMS commission. I mean, what else can we do, Mark? We cannot, we cannot make them meet. We can, we can send them a strongly worded letter that says, "You need to meet to determine who the medical director is" so that the remaining three municipalities in our IGA can have service.
And again, I just want to make it clear that Lake Mills said they were going to contact Ryan Brothers in case there was no medical director. Not for sure they, so just to be clear, I don't want to be mistaken.
I think the issue that I'm running into trying to look at this logically is we've asked, demanded, strongly worded, requested for going on eighteen months.
No, it's before that.
Well, I'm just saying.
That you know.
That I know of.
Yeah.
That
It's two years.
It's not, one more strongly worded letter, one more request is not going to change this outcome. It's going to collapse.
Well, if we did contract with anybody, it would be on a month-to-month basis so that we could sever it with thirty days notice. Number two, whatever we paid for a medical services director, if we decide to go and engage somebody for services, this would be a direct offset.
It's not up to us, though.
I don't know what else, yeah, but I don't know what else you can do. I'm not prepared to just go bear, and if they're not moving on this, you know, maybe they're not worried about it from their municipalities, but I am from Cambridge's. I don't see where we have a choice.
And again, I believe that the scenario that's going to play out is, you know, they're probably in talks with Mercy, but I cannot give you anything concrete because I haven't got any word other than what was said at the meeting.
Mr. Schrader reported to his board that every morning the EMS calls both Jefferson and Dane County 911 center to give them their level of status. One of their board members said, "What happens if April 6th, there's no medical director?" And Mr. Schrader said that mutual aid would kick in.
Which is not wrong.
That's a very short-term thing before everybody starts going crazy.
Bad plan.
Along with that continued before the EMS was deemed dissolved, and he could not answer that.
Because
That would be a question for the state.
You cannot use mutual aid as your EMS service.
You cannot. You cannot. You cannot rely on mutual aid. That, I mean, we were told that, I don't remember if that was Carrie or who it was that was here that said, "You cannot rely on mutual," Eric, I think, said it.
And Deer Grove, as you can imagine, is very fatigued by our requests and he put in quite a bit of, quite a bit of work and proposals and everything and was very disappointed in how it played out, but Eric shared with me that, you know, moving forward, if there's going to be any kind of relationship with Deer Grove, it'll have to be from his commission to our commission, not necessarily him individually. And I, you know, I don't blame him. He did put in quite a bit of work to try to help us out, but the helping out got somehow distorted in, you know, him taking a hostile takeover, which I don't see it.
I don't see it either.
All right. Anything further on this medical services director? I don't want to sound like a broken record, but that's the big issue right now.
I don't think there's anything we can do.
I can, I can reach out to the commission members. I will CC copy everyone here and reach out to them even tonight yet or in the morning and say, "I'd like to have a special meeting." It only can be a short one, it's just medical director as the agenda item, and we need to have it as soon as possible.
Okay.
I can make that request.
And
But
Still
Yeah.
Can you do that, Dennis?
Yeah, do that.
That's what you can do. We're going to be forced into action, right? The mutual aid will kick in and then there'll be, the counties will get going and then something
So here's my thing, and it's the next, one of the next items we're going to talk about is if they're not doing their jobs, I don't want to give them any more money.
Uh-huh. Well, that's the budget barrel we're over.
We'll get to that. All right. So do we want to have Chris write this letter?
Yes.
I'm just recommending, you know, try to get another commission member on board with my thought pattern, our board's thought pattern, and force a special meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. I will do that. And I'll keep Lisa in the loop so she can distribute to the rest of the board.
The public should at least know what is the plan, what is going to happen.
Yeah. I mean, like it or not, you got to give Lake Mills credit because they have a plan in place for their constituents. It's, it really put us at a disadvantage. It was very unneighborly.
All we were trying to do was put together a plan.
But at the end of the day, they're driven to do the same thing we are for our constituents, which is to take care of them. And the three of them did that, so we can't
All right, so you'll get the copy, or you'll get the letter prepared, you'll copy all of us.
Yeah, it'll be an email.
Okay. All right. And And asking for a, a meeting here. And that's the only issue on the agenda. Have the meeting sometime next week.
Okay.
All right. Are we good with that?
Or this week?
This week, maybe.
That's fine.
Chris, thanks for messengering and carrying the water for this, so.
Yeah, I just wish I could give you more factual, helpful information. But a lot of it's just scatter. You know, it's, I, I, I'm going to throw a shout out, out there to Jana because a lot of the information I get on the Fire and EMS commission is from meetings she attends that I can't, I can't go to because I'm at work or whatever the case is. There's other folks that, that are, you know, kind of gleaning information and I'm unfortunately finding out this information secondhand. Whereas we should, you know, how it's supposed to work is we have a commission meeting and, and everything's on the table, right? We talk about it. Yes, it's, we, we have an agenda, but we should be able to talk about budget items. We should be able to talk about medical director issues. We should be able to talk about the whole gamut. And I should come back here with a very robust report rather than me sitting here for the first minute in kind of silence because, okay, well, what, what kind of, what do you guys want to know? Because I can tell you, it's not very, it's not very systematic. It's not sustainable right now, how we're running things.
I think one thing that concerns me gravely is we have an interim director who's really not qualified, I don't think personally, to be, to be running. Now, he has no commission oversight. He has no, who's he reporting to?
He reports to the president of the commission, Dave Schrader.
Who is no longer going to be a Lake Mills board member as of...
According to the IGA, he should be direct, he should be reporting to the entire board. He does not have a contract like the previous director did, so the whole, he should be reporting to the whole board.
And this level of autonomy, I mean, he's got, what, carte blanche autonomy to make any decisions that he sees fit.
And who, I thought it was co-director.
Mr. Williams is the only one who's been at meetings lately. I don't know what Mr. Ebling is up to.
Okay.
All right. Chris, you're going to get that out, so let's bounce back up here. We've got the Cambridge Foundation proposal. Everybody's got a copy of this? Okay. Yeah, let's see here. Where, where are we at on this?
I mean, in, in my opinion, if, if all other four municipalities were willing to meet, then I'd be willing to meet. But if, if they're not, then, and I'm pretty sure there's going to be at least two municipalities that have no interest in it.
I think the question that I have ultimately is, what is the end goal of this? I mean, consultants are expensive. They're time-consuming. And what, I understand they're, they stated and recommend re-establishment of a unified public safety EMS fire department for the Cambridge Community Fire and EMS District. What does that look like?
Hopefully, that's what the consultants would help us determine.
But we have to have an end goal in mind.
Well, I think what we would want is what we've been fighting for this whole time. Is that we contract with Deer Grove for EMS services to provide local services here in Cambridge and we continue on with a fire-only EMS.
And what happens if their consultant doesn't recommend that?
Fire-only IGA. Their consultants can't tell us what we have to do.
No, I know, I know. But what happens if that consultant does not recommend that?
That consultant can't recommend, so that would need to be in agreement. The consultant isn't going to tell us what to do. The consultant is helping us come up with what to do. Sort of like Jane doesn't tell us what to do as our legal consultant. She just gives us facts and then we decide how we want to move forward with something. If that is what the Cambridge Foundation is recommending, that's what I'm assuming they're recommending, so that's why I would say, let's do it.
It's not written that way, and I kind of read that too, Kristen, because it goes to analyze and recommend re-establishment. Well, if you're telling somebody, we're wanting to re-recommend the re-establishment, they're analyzing to that goal, right? And so if it's a more of a budget analysis of what to do, right, that's, I think, a little bit different. And then this was sent to all five villages, right? So it's, right, intent is to create that unified district. That's the way I read.
Basically, I read it like the intent is to rewrite the IGA with all five municipalities.
And I think that's my problem is every single one of us is coming up with a different interpretation.
And they want to basically, they want to hire a consultant to analyze. Well, it doesn't need analyzing. It needs workshops with every one of these villages and re-going through every, you know what I mean? Like, that's, I think, a little bit different, so.
And I think too, you know, they say, we will assist in moving forward, not taking steps back and not look at yesterday.
But we have to look at yesterday.
We have to look at yesterday.
Because we want to make sure we're not repeating it.
Thank you. You said exactly.
I think this is a very, it's a very generous offer.
Agreed.
It's, I love.
And I, I'm very appreciative of it, but I think it's, right now, in the situation we're in, I think it's a little premature. I think it's something that if we could, we could table it and get, get our, lack of better terms, get our crap together from a commission standpoint, it's definitely something down the road. We could contact Mr. Rumpf and the, and the foundation on and say, you know, I think we're ready. I think we're at a spot right now with where we're at, where we would like the foundation to come in and hire a consultant. Right now, this consultant would be paid, it would be astronomical. We would be setting them up for failure. We'd be setting that consultant firm up for failure.
That's a point.
I would agree. If, if we can't define as a commission, a clear end goal, they're not going to...
In agreement with everybody else in the commission, all participants, so.
Right.
I talked to Mike Rumpf about this, and I have a great deal of respect for Mike and the foundation and what it's done here in Cambridge. It's not, you know, they're willing to help. I think they have budgeted something, I'm just going to throw numbers out, 50,000 to 80,000, maybe it was 30 to 80,000 dollars. So they know that to bring in a facilitator, you know, somebody, not a, not, not getting into negotiations, but somebody that's experienced in these matters to be able to sit down, it's going to take some time. I think that's where they were looking at, you know, this, this March 27th, just to give them an idea so they can get going on the, on the search. Nothing is going to happen. I think it's going to be the five and it's a matter of working things out with us. I asked about Oakland and if, I said, what happens if they do not want to come in? And it was like, okay, well, then if they don't, then it's just the four. And we'll work with the four to try to, you know, forge a way ahead. I don't think we, you know, we hold off here. This thing, you know, we're, we're dealing on a 12-hour issue here regarding medical services director. You know, I don't disagree that our, our services are, they may be, somebody said here, on life support, pardon the pun, not intended, but, you know, we have to get going on something. Otherwise, there, there's nothing left. So I'm, I, I would support this, you know, as a proposal because it's going to take weeks, if not months, to be able to sit down with people.
But, but I think, I think Chris and Kristen brought up a really great point, Mark. To what end? Unless, unless the five municipalities, and Brian chimed in on this too, unless the five municipalities know what it is, what our end goal is, we'd be wasting, we'd be wasting 30, 40,000 dollars of the, of the foundation's money just trying to get it off the ground. And I wouldn't want to do that.
Who, who could actually hire this, to do this consultant? Would it have to be the commission doing this or could the community say, we want to do this?
It would be the five municipalities could, the five municipalities can make a change in the IGA anytime we want. As long as the five municipalities agree.
As long as it's unanimous, so that's an assumption, right? We can all agree on that, but that is an assumption. So if we say, hey, the, the foundation, hey, this is fantastic. We're really interested in this. But all we can do is make a recommendation to the EMS commission to use this, right? And who knows if that's even going to get anywhere, right?
Unless every municipality would, would sign on to binding, a binding decision coming out of this, then...
Or at least agree to even go through the motion to do it, right, and open up all that stuff, right, so.
I believe Lake Mills did, had a consultant years ago when they were looking at their, their fire and EMS services. And I think they were given several options and chose none. And it was a lengthy process.
Years ago, when I worked with clients, I had an expression that I use quite frequently. If you're happy with what you're getting, keep doing what you're doing. If you're not, you're going to have to change something. We have been going down this road. We have changed commissioners. We have seen budget issues. We've got concerns on staffing. There are significant problems. It's not working the way we're doing. I think we can all agree on that. I am willing to change it. I'm willing to say, okay, bring in somebody. Are we all going to be happy with what this new person comes up with? Probably not. In fact, I would say, no, we're not.
But again...
But if we can at least change what it is that we're doing, because we keep going on and on and on. And here we are tonight, we're, I wouldn't say micromanaging, but we're getting into something that is the commission's business, which is the medical services director.
What, what I would do, what, what, what I would do is I would want to, I would want to go back to the commission, or to the foundation and ask them, the group would wait until after the election.
Yeah, I would push it out a month.
So that we can see who the new people are going to be. Because then we're going to know if people are willing to talk and meet or if they're not.
I would agree.
Well, aren't they literally though asking if the municipalities are receptive to committing to attending an introductory meeting and starting the process, right?
No, and committing, and committing to the process. I would absolutely say an introductory meeting I'd be fine with. But, but committing to a process that I don't know what that process is or what the end result of that process is, that I, that is the part...
It's a little vague, I think.
Yeah, that second part of that sentence is what concerns me.
Okay. But they're not committing to spending the money until we come together to at least get that introductory meeting and define the process?
But again, we wouldn't have an introductory meeting with the current structure. We'd wait until after the election. So why don't we just wait until after the election to make the decision? And then why don't we meet with the four municipalities first to find out if we need to bring a third party in?
That's...
Well, other than they ask that we respond by March 27th.
Well, our response can be that, hey, this, this sounds like a great idea. We just think it's a month premature. We would like to see what the results of the election are. We would like to have a four municipality meeting. And then if that is, does not look like the four municipalities are on the same page, then I would say, yes, let's bring in a third party.
What do you think, Mark?
I'm going to make a motion that we sign off on what the Cambridge Foundation has so graciously offered. Give them a response before March 27th stating that we are interested in this introductory meeting and committing to the process of improving our emergency services. That's my motion.
I'll second that. I would agree with that.
So you're okay with this letter?
I'm okay with letting them...
Because that's what Mark just repeated, the first paragraph.
I'm okay with committing to doing an introductory meeting and committing to a, a process of coming together to see where we're at with this, so.
I just don't think we need a third party at this point in time. I really think we need to just put it off until after the election.
I agree.
Okay.
Can you restate your motion, Mark? Interested in meeting and committing...
Before March 27th and to have this meeting, introductory meeting, committing to the process of improving the relations that we have with our emergency services. I mean, we've got public safes, public safety EMS and fire department. I'm just putting it underneath the umbrella of emergency. That's my motion.
Okay, but I, I just wanted to do a clarification. The relationship isn't with our EMS services, Mark. That what needs improving per se, the commission, that they're, they're talking about the four municipalities. And I, that, that's a nuance in your motion.
I'm trying to use the language that they have given to us.
Their language says committing to attending an introductory meeting and committing to the process on or before March 27th.
And further goes on to say, and recommend re-establishment of the united...
Unified.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second.
Too many questions on what the process is.
Okay, roll call.
Colin Beck?
No.
Greco?
Yes.
Brinek?
No.
Franklin, Blackwood?
No.
McNally?
Yes. Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we reply to this letter from the foundation asking them if we can simply delay the decision until after the election so that we can move forward and so that the people who are actually going to be elected and follow through on this process are the ones making the decision to enter into the process.
I would second that.
Because right now, if Christiana says yes, if Lake Mills says yes, they're both lame duck people. What if the people coming in aren't as committed to the process? I think we need to wait till after the election.
I see both sides. You're, you're just saying that you want to respond with that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not giving, I think for my personally, not giving it a definitive no.
Yeah, right.
It's more of a, we need to reevaluate this in 30 days or whatever.
Yeah, well, to me, it, to me, it's not a no. I think they've been very generous.
Right.
And, and I think it's a great offer and I would love to be able to take it. I just don't think we have the right people at the, at all of the municipalities to make that decision right now, this close to an election. We have an election in a week.
We don't even have all the municipalities. I mean, Oakland is a key player in this.
Right.
And then basically your, your motion, Paula, is just, they're, they're asking for a commitment on two different fronts here and we're just asking them to delay our, our commitment. All right.
Until when?
March, or April 27th.
Yep.
So we should add this to the agenda for our, our April meeting?
Yes. Well, the second, April 2nd meeting.
And let them know we'll do that. I think it would be good at lea, it's just important to... It's just important to take into account the offer that they're trying to...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And there's somebody trying to help make action to this and do something.
Oh, yes, thank, yes. I love that someone is trying to help us resolve the issue.
I guess my enthusiasm was committing to the process of trying to get something else moving.
Oh, yeah.
I think that, you know, the unified in all caps, you know, I misinterpreted that initially. I thought, you know, is this person going to come in and try to, try to say that they want to have a combined service again with fire and EMS, which we know is not going to go. So I just think from a fiscal standpoint, from the foundation, it would probably be more fiscally responsible if you wait till after the election and you see what the commission looks like. And then that commission can start getting things straightened out. I'm not, I'm being...
Optimistic?
Optimistic on it, that we can figure some things out before we bring in these consultants. Because if we bring in the consultant right now, it's just they're going to be sitting there on the clock because we do not have our stuff together.
Correct.
I mean, look at the trials and tribulations we're going through for me just to have a special commission meeting.
Well, and there's still the Oakland audit. There's all of that that's still in play right now.
Did you ever get your payroll question answered?
You put in an open records request, right?
I finally had to do an open records request. And the response I received was, "Hi, Kristen, I wanted to acknowledge receipt of your request. I'm working on gathering the information." And that was sent to me on Wednesday, March 19th. And that is the last I've heard.
So, Mark, would a response like that? I haven't worked with the commissioner, no, or the foundation or no of them. And I don't, you know what I mean, just the relationship. Would that be what they're looking for from a response or?
I would think that the foundation, you know, if we were to give them a letter saying, yes, we want to move ahead, but it's effective April 27th instead of March 27th, with this introductory meeting and committing to the process. And again, you're not going to get the meeting scheduled right away.
But that's not what my motion was.
I'm answering the question that Brian...
Right, right, but how do we know we're going to need them if we get a new commission? If we get new representatives from Lake Mills and new representatives from Kristiana, we may not need.
As I say, their offer might not, they might be able to spend that money elsewhere. It might not be needed.
If you think that the dysfunctionality that currently exists is going to just go away with a new slate of trustees, or I don't know what they call them, in other municipalities, no. I don't see that happening.
Really?
No. I think it's going to call for sitting down and airing it. One person per community on the commission. Have EMS there, have the fire department there, one person from there.
The EMS and fire department don't have an issue, Mark. This isn't between the fire and the EMS. If the fire and EMS are invited to this from the foundation, I'm not quite sure that, this should be among the five municipalities.
I can tell you that from a practical standpoint, putting 30 people in a room, nothing happens. You are going to have to get it back to where you have one person from each municipality. And hopefully, all five show up. You have the two services that we're talking about that are emergency, EMS as well as fire. And then you sit down and you talk these issues through, knowing that you're not going to agree on everything.
Mark, EMS and the Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department? We are contracting with them. Why do they need to sit down with us? The issue is between the five municipalities, four municipalities.
Okay. You're, I'm just telling you...
And this consultant isn't a mediator. It's a consultant that's going to be on the clock, tick tock, tick tock, tick tock. Billing, billing. I guess...
As I said, if you're happy with what you're getting, keep doing what you're doing.
We're not, Mark. Stop it.
Then change.
We are going to. I just don't think this is the right way to change it.
Okay.
At this point. At this point in time.
All right.
I appreciate that the foundation is making this off to us. And it might be the right thing to do. I just don't think we can make that decision tonight.
Okay, all right.
I think if we automatically are going to assume, keep in mind what that word usually means, that new boards can't work together, I think we're setting ourselves up for failure automatically. If we go into the new election, into the new commission, going, well, we're just going to continue to fail. We're going to, you're right, we're going to continue to fail. But you're going to have new minds, new mindsets, new backing of new boards. We aren't committing to the same old, same old. We are all committed to the process. But we can't ignore what has happened. We have to examine it to know how to fix it. We have to know where the finances went wrong. We have to know where the quote unquote "control" went wrong.
All right. Okay, well, we've talked about it. It's been voted down as far as accepting. We can bring this back and...
Paula's made a motion.
Paula's made a motion.
There was a second.
All right.
Roll call?
Yeah.
The motion is to request a delay, right?
Request a delay response?
A one-month delay until after the election, basically.
Is there a second?
Yes.
I did.
All right. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Creco?
Yes.
Brineck?
Yes.
Franklin? Blackwood?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
McNally?
I'm thinking.
There goes the early meeting.
Well, nobody ever said I was that much of a speedster. I want to see something get done. So I'll say yes.
We all do, Mark. And Lisa, obviously, when you write that letter, it's, you know, thank them very much for this offer. And it's an offer we are very intrigued by and, you know, interested in, perhaps pursuing, it's just the need to...
Being cognizant of their finances as well.
Right.
They're committing 50 to whatever thousand dollars, and it's not needed.
Okay, that takes care of Cambridge Foundation. What about the commission budget? Do we have anything further on this?
They haven't talked about it.
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
It's before us. The commission did recommend this to all communities. Have three passed it already, Chris? Do you know?
Two.
Two?
Two. Kristiana hasn't had a meeting.
So Lake Mills and Rockdale.
Lake Mills did pass it?
Yeah, I believe so.
And Rockdale.
That's correct.
I'm not comfortable passing this budget. Well, I'm not either considering their estimated $500 for training has been far exceeded already, and we're only three months into the year.
I mean...
I don't, their wages, I mean, you, we have, what, four, Chris? Employees running-ish? One and a half paramedics was the last I knew, and maybe three or four.
One and a half, maybe now down to one.
Four and a half. I mean, our overtime is going to be blown for the year. Wages and benefits are blown for the year. I think we're...
Have all of the items that are underneath EMS operations, is that EMS and fire commission operations?
Uh-uh.
So basically, Cambridge EMS is the two items.
No, this is their operating, EMS operating budget.
This is only the EMS operating budget?
Yes.
Then we can't approve this because I don't know what the whole budget is.
So in addition, well, that's all on the other side.
The side is the commission.
The total, they're saying EMS commission or EMS expenses plus fire expenses plus total commission expenses is coming out to supposedly 1.2. I think it's some creative math, but...
Where's all that other stuff that always seems to pop out? Like, oh, by the way, these back wages or this back, you know what I mean? Like, there's none of that in here, right?
Like bills that haven't been paid yet?
Yeah, that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good question. And why is it showing the... Do you want to look at it, not sideways?
No, no, it's fine.
Okay.
When I looked at this, I'm seeing the EMS, their budget and everything coming in along with the commission at $1,207,000, correct? Now, from what I remember, Jana, don't we have $75,000? Isn't that the budget for the fire department for this year?
Yes. And that's on this document in that third, that fourth, the column all the way to the...
All the way to the right.
All the way to the right.
Operations.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Just from $90,000 to $75,000.
Okay, so they do have that in there. So the 382 includes the fire department plus all of their other expenses plus the EMS at $1,207,000.
What we don't have in here, as far as I can tell, though, is the line of credit. That is approximately, Jana, help me out here, $75,000 on that line of credit?
No, they increased it to $150,000, and they have a balance right now of $82,000 on the line as of the fire commission meeting. I would be willing to guess that it went up some more because the fire department's wax cars were cut off again, couldn't get fuel. And the fire department also got an email from Menards asking for help for collecting some money that was due from EMS that they weren't able to reach.
And we have a squad payment coming up, no.
There's a squad payment due April 15th of $56,000.
Yeah.
And another ambulance payment due this quarter.
What was the budget? I mean, if this one comes in at $1,207,000, notwithstanding those, you know, our current issues. Do you remember what the budget was for last year, Chris?
Yes, yeah, looking.
Somebody? $1,400?
1.5, 1.4, 1.5, something like that.
Well, that wasn't the budget, that was the actual.
That was the actual.
Because the budget you are still working off of, the 23 budget.
Correct.
And that included all of the town of Lake Mills?
In 2024, yes.
Not in 23, it didn't, though. Not the proposed.
23's budget did not include all of the town of Lake Mills.
Okay, so we don't really have a budget number from what it was last year.
And just an observation from the Lake Mills meeting the other morning, Mr. Schrader explained to his board that the $1,207,000 that you're looking at, they took all of the run revenue out of the budget because it's not money that now anybody can count on or is predictable. So there's no run revenue to offset the expense of the budget for '25.
So the run revenue would be a decrease then, which would affect, if that happened, which would affect what your concern was about paying off the line of credit.
Well, his explanation to the board was, Mr. Schrader's explanation to his board was, well, we could potentially use it for future equipment needs or to put away in a fund for capital expenditure.
Which we do have to develop a five-year and 10-year plan, but fleecing the communities...
It depends on how realistic you think this budget is that they're presenting.
No.
This does have $192,400 in estimated revenue.
But they added it, according to him, they added it back, and that's why it's $1,200,000. I haven't seen the budget, I'm just going off a list.
Says estimated revenue at $2,000, I call it $192,000, right?
Yeah. And this bottom line for the village is $591,552 a year.
So that $190...
$600,000 for fire and EMS for the village of Cambridge.
For service that we're not even paying, or we're not even getting.
Right.
I mean, let me reface that. We're getting basic service and we're getting fire service.
This $192,000, is that the run revenue then?
That's what it says.
That's what it said.
See, mine doesn't say anything.
No, it doesn't say run revenue with...
It says estimated revenue at $2,000.
That's all I'm all for.
Over on the right-hand side.
This is all their mapping to get to...
Did they base it on 481 calls, which is what they have ahead of that number?
Which they're also estimating they're going to get $2,000 in run revenue. Realistically, they're going to get somewhere between 800 to 1,000 because run revenue is based on what payer will pay. So we have a heavy community of seniors, calls, things like that. You got Medicare. Medicare is notorious for being a poor payer. So I don't think you can realistically estimate $2,000 a call. I think, what was Lake, or what was Dear Grove's estimate? I'm trying to go back. I want to say theirs was like 600.
All right. What do we want to do here with this budget of $1,207,000?
One word of caution, and correct me if I'm incorrect. The budget just needs to be approved by a majority of the communities. So even if we vote, no, if the other three vote yes, it would go into effect.
Kristiana didn't vote yet, they have no meaning to vote.
No.
So, either way, we're held hostage.
Yeah, otherwise it just reverts back to other stuff and then just keeps perpetuating the other stuff.
I mean, I know it keeps saying it reverts back to the 2023 budget, but don't we still try to work on a budget and pass one?
They're supposed to.
I mean, this idea of, oh, well, it just went back to 2023. Oh, it just went back to 2023.
Which we don't need.
Right. But even, you talk about repeating the mistakes of the past, you know, it... I can't in good conscience keep throwing good money at the bed.
Paula, what does this do to the, your chair of audit and finance? If we have to come up with $147,000 quarterly?
We're going to need to get like a $500,000 loan.
And then probably go for a referendum.
And we're going to have to go for a referendum because we cannot afford this. We could cut all of our staff and then we might be able to afford it. But we can't be like Rockdale and have individuals mow our own lawns, mow the parks, you know, fix the flowers. Cambridge can't do that.
So that's what it's coming down to, folks, is we're being asked to come up with $591,000 or $147,000 per quarter. And I think the last I looked, we were paying $67,000 per quarter.
$62,000, wasn't it?
$62,700, $62,700, okay.
So $63,000, so...
And the budget, I believe it was cut down to roughly $200,000.
Because we're going to get, you know, whether it's...
It's budgeted basically for a quarter.
For the whole year.
For the whole year.
I think we have to send it back to the drawing board and actually have a realistic look at it.
Can we look?
The issue is also we're, you know...
we're, we're, you know, all those questions that you asked about, well, what about this? And what about the 3%, you know, the wages increase? What about what we're paying for the other mutual aid support that's out there? I don't think that's incorporated in here.
Oh, yeah.
There's the overtime that has to be looked at. We're going to get assessed on this and then more than likely, we're going to get assessed again.
And then if it isn't taken, they just get loans and then those loans get added on. And eventually, there's this avalanche of years of all these other things.
With interest.
And we keep going, well, this is what we need for a budget this year. But by the way, all this other stuff you're going to eventually deal with too.
And that's also keep in mind that, that Oakland's going through an audit, right? So they're, per the IGA.
Oakland left and we're going to owe them money.
Yes.
So Chris, Chris, this came out of the commission budget, right?
Yeah.
This is their submitted.
This is their submitted budget.
Do you feel this is a complete budget?
I feel it was a, it was a budget that needed to be presented to the municipalities as soon as possible because we have issues within the commission, legal issues that I believe Jane's dealing with, where we have to have an updated budget. So it's the best that they could come up with in a somewhat short period of time. Is it a true reflection? No, but I think they're banking on the fact that, well, if we go over here or we go over there, we can just, we can just reassess.
I mean, a budget is an estimate.
Thanks.
I mean, in all, you know, it's an estimate.
About for that, yeah. Chris has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't really have a place in it, but didn't they say at the meeting though that this was the worst-case budget or the higher one and they were hoping it would come in under? Or did I get that wrong?
That is correct, yeah. We took the higher of the two. Deer Grove estimate came, budget came in lower, but we took the, the higher of the two.
Do you know what the other ones were case?
I don't recall. I think it was 1.1 something or 1.047 or something like that.
Well, I don't know, we got five different ones, so it's hard to follow which one it was.
And did that budget really take out all of the things that would be taken out if we went with Deer Grove?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Because this still has 18,000 in payroll for the CPA, that would all go away. The medical director would go away, the office expenses would go away.
Yeah.
Vehicle maintenance, I mean, all of it, it, it would all be, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to point out though, that this one is based on the $1,000 a month for a medical director fee. And now that the current medical director's resigned, I hard, I, I assume that's going to at least triple. That's just a guess.
Um, not necessarily. Deer Grove goes through E, MEP and theirs is like 600 a month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It just depends on, but every service is going to be different.
We don't know.
That's, that's a huge guesstimate.
That was just something I thought that could be.
Yeah. Could be 2,000, could be 500.
Okay.
So.
So what we've got is a 1,207,000 budget. Two communities have approved it, Lake Mills and Rockdale, who both combined have 12%. 88%, which is borne by Christiana in Cambridge. We haven't, but you can see the numbers that we are going to be looking at. If we said no, what happens? Do they come back and say, all right, it's the million one? Is there a way that we can get this down?
It's got to be dissected.
And, and are we prepared to do it? To help in the operating room to do this dissection?
Heck, yeah.
Yeah.
As we get the information from the commission, we've, I've got half of it started. Not half of it, I got more than half of it started.
And Brian, what did you say?
After the election, there'll be a new, right? And then that'll be a budget item because communities didn't pass the budget. Well, I don't know, right?
No, Christiana won't pass it before the election because they don't have a meeting.
They don't have a meeting.
But you said it doesn't have to be unanimous, right?
But it has to be a majority. It should be three of the four.
Only two have said yes.
Yep, so that's not a majority.
Is this something we want on table?
No, I think we need to not approve this budget because I think they need to go back and work some better numbers for us.
Yep, I would agree.
Because Village of Cambridge cannot afford $600,000 a year for fire and EMS service.
Yeah, I know that.
I mean.
Do we give them a target?
I mean, let's look at this realistically. The Village of Cambridge, the constituents in Cambridge were upset when, when we wanted a 300,000 loan. We put it down to 200,000 knowing we'd probably have to take another loan out yet this year. But we weren't looking at it being a half a million dollar loan, which at this point is probably pretty close to what we'd have to get.
Which to me feels very irresponsible.
So from the Village of Cambridge, just ask the audit and finance chair from Village of Cambridge, this, this budget for the Village of Cambridge is untenable.
Do we want to give them a number that, however we get it? I mean, just going back and say, this is not acceptable, what, what, what are your limits?
Where were we when we were somewhat financially, what was that budget?
2023's budget, well, the budget estimated.
That's a base of coming up with something, you have to add some things.
Okay, but let's be realistic. The Village of Cambridge couldn't afford the 2023 budget either.
No, I know, I know.
I mean, we have gone through all of our reserves of the Village of Cambridge because we've been paying for fire and EMS service. Has been a reason why we've gone through some of that, those reserves.
Right.
So ever since we went from the volunteer EMS service to the paid EMS service, the Village of Cambridge has never made up that difference from a tax perspective.
We can't do anything about that stuff from the past, but we can give them some number to try to, you know, this will be palatable, right? A goal.
At the last meeting of the four municipalities, they asked and we had said what the current budget was, what was.
60, so 63,000.
63 a quarter.
63,000 a quarter is what we can afford.
I'm, I'm just roughing it out, 260, and they're asking 591. So what do we want to drop this 591 down to?
260, that's what we can afford. So we got to figure out how to get Oakland to come back in. And maybe change it, I mean, quite frankly, we probably need to change how we're, do it. I don't think EMS service should necessarily be equalized value the same way fire service is.
Right.
I think fire service and overhead should be equalized value because everybody has to do that equally. I think, I think EMS service should be somehow either per capita or number of calls. We're having a problem with per capita. How do you count the cap, the per capita of Oakland? Let's say Oakland came back in. How do you count the per capita of Oakland when some of those residences are summer residences? It's not like those people aren't being covered.
Well, yeah.
So how do you count this, because you, because is per capita based on population? Because that's, then, then all the summer people are getting it for free. So that's where per capita, I, we'd have to make sure that got worked out.
Was it Deer Grove who, they used the combination of the three values?
We had that in our draft IGA that we presented a year ago.
There was something where it was like per capita plus EV plus something or other.
Calls per capita.
But we still hadn't figured out how per capita was, one of the things, as we'd gotten into that contract.
Right.
Or that change, I was going to question how we calculated per capita based on summer people and summer homes.
And we questioned the number of calls because we have the two nursing homes. Assisted weddings.
Well, we can turn this down, but if we're going to give them a, a proposal or, or something to shoot for, we've got to come up with a number. I mean, we can't just say, well, this is too much.
I don't know that it's realistic to just say, well, you have to cut off 500,000. I think it's got to be, you've got to.
But if I'm part of the commission, tell me where you're at. Tell me, give me a number that, that, that I can work with.
Can I, can I make a point of order? So Chris, you just got done saying, and I'm not trying to make an argument here, but you just got done saying that this isn't realistic because, for example, the train's only 500 dollars. They've already stopped that on January 6th, whatever date.
Right.
But now you're saying you want to go back and tell them to make it less. Well, if they make it less, honestly, it's not going to be a realistic budget.
It's a fair point.
And you're going to be in budget overruns and it's going to snowball the problem that we all are already having. So I don't think to go back and say, hey, you need to cut something off of here. You can do that, but it's not going to be realistic for you folks when it comes to draft tax. And then you're going to really have a hard time explaining to your constituents what's going on.
I think, I think it, the only, the only way, only way Cambridge is going to be able to afford EMS services is if we pass a big-ass referendum, if we get Oakland to come back in, or if we cut services. And we offer EMS services, local EMS services, only during certain hours where the most calls are. I, I know. I know, but those are our three, those are what, our four, our four options, whatever I laid out? I mean, that's it.
I don't think Oakland's going to come back in unless they see a meaningful change. And it has to be done really, really soon because they're looking at a June 30th deadline. They have to give notice to Fort Jefferson and Lake Mills by June 30th if they do not want to stay with them. There's an awful lot of work that has to be done in a short amount of time.
We're not arguing that with you, Mark.
No, but this other part, so I, I don't know what to say on this. It's like we're trying to.
But, I mean, otherwise you guys, we either go for a referendum that says increase, okay, and I'll be conservative, increase our budget by 400,000 a year to cover fire services. This is on top of the 95,000 we asked for years ago to help cover fire and EMS services, which didn't cover it. So 400,000 to cover, cover fire and EMS services, that's a referendum that we're going to have to go for if we do this, if Oakland doesn't come back in.
I would make a motion to vote no on this budget.
I'll second that.
And I think that was a fair point that was made, giving them a number to shoot for is.
Recipe for.
Allowing them to do some creative accounting, and that's it.
And part of my concern is because I don't know what that referendum number, we're going to have to go for a referendum. I don't know what that referendum number is on a budget I cannot.
Exactly.
Rely on.
Exactly.
Isn't this in essence though, just taming this because there'll be a new commission shortly and then they'll have to work on a budget, right?
Yep, yes.
So.
But they can work on.
So either way, I mean.
They can work on '25 and '26 at the same time.
Yep.
Chris?
I know from the commission's standpoint, they would like to see this passed, full disclosure. Because like I said, they, our legal representative is, we still have a lot of open issues with not, not having a approved budget, a current approved budget. I think we're still under the residual of 2023 plus the added additional assessments. So, so that's where the commission stands. Where we stand, if we punk this back to the, the commission, it's just going to be a waiting game until after the election.
Exactly. And everything I think at this point is a waiting game.
But, I mean, but if we, if we were to accept this budget, what does it give us? Nothing, it gives us nothing. It doesn't give me numbers I can rely on for when, when, when we're can, doesn't give us numbers that we can rely on when we're looking at how much of a referendum are we going to have to go out for for fire and EMS services?
Well, and we have to start looking at our own budget.
Right.
For the village. And if we don't have, you know, accurate numbering.
I was thinking that, you know, if we can go back to the commission and reword the IGA change to something that's palatable, more palatable to the other municipalities, this could also help the budget though.
I've got a problem with that, yes. Because the reason we're in this, then let's rewrite the whole IGA. If they want to have their own EMS services.
Yeah.
Then let's rewrite the whole IGA. Let's go with a fire-only, fire-only IGA.
I agree.
And, and.
And then each municipality can do, can contract their EMS services as they see fit.
I don't know that that's realistic.
Why?
Because how do we afford Deer Grove on our own? How do we house them? How do we, I mean, if that is our choice.
We still, we still can go into a contract, we were going to go into a contract with Oakland.
That's banking on, I, I think we have a lot of hopes with Oakland.
No, 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 I mean, you can't, we can, we can, we can go into a contract with another municipality to help cover services.
Oh, right.
Without it being in the IGA.
Yes.
That was the point I was trying to make.
Gotcha, okay.
So, but what we would then need to probably do is rent space from, to house an ambulance here.
That, when I brought that up to our commission attorney, that, that proposal, he was not necessarily open to that because he said that would pretty much be the downfall of the commission. You really wouldn't need a commission.
Meaning we wouldn't need a commission lawyer.
Right, because the fire department is fairly independent with their constitution. And if each municipality can figure out what they want to do for EMS services, what do you really need a commission for?
Because we have to pay for that building, we have to pay for the equipment. I mean, that's why. Our department doesn't own the equipment.
And again, it comes down to what can they control?
Brian, we've got a motion to turn this down in a second. Your thoughts?
I don't, I can't approve this budget. There's just too much stuff missing in there, but I just wanted to talk through all the opinions and options. So that's where I would be.
Yeah. Well, I know that the Village of Cambridge, you know, we end up paying 591,000. There are, there is, there are going to be people just, I don't want to say coming out with pitchforks, but they will be upset because this is going to hit the property tax bills and.
Where they're going to be upset is they're not getting the services that they're paying for.
Well, you're going to, you know, it's one or the other, you know? Do you, if you want to have the services, okay, fine, just go ahead and pay this. I don't think it's going to come down that much by going with Deer Grove. We don't even have a final number from Deer Grove.
And we won't.
Yes, we did. Well, for 2025, we did.
For 2025, but for 2026, we have no idea what Deer Grove is going to.
We don't have a final number from the commission for 2026 either.
We've got, I, I know, and we're working on 2025 and then there's, this is where it's at. So I'm, I'm trying to kind of, all right, what are the other competing numbers going to be?
Aren't you not going to get one from Deer Grove because they denied the amendment for Deer Grove to move forward? So you're not going to get the numbers from Deer Grove.
No.
Said we change, we tried.
And they only want to deal commission to commission now or, or community to community? That's it?
The commission.
Well, Brian, you make a good point. 591,000 is just, it's too much. I don't know if there's going to be a significant change in the leadership of the various municipalities, but I don't see how we can just condone that kind of a shift, 260 to 590. but I don't see how we can just condone that kind of a shift, 260 to 590. There, there has got to be another way of doing this. And I, I, I don't have confidence that Oakland is going to be coming back. And so therefore, it's going to take some tough medicine across the board. Because you've lost 50% of your budget and now you're, you're stuck with it. There will have to be some, some big cuts or restructuring. So I'll, I'll vote along with you. And so roll call, please.
I made the motion.
Is that a statement?
We've got a motion in a second, so I'm just, you know, moving ahead here.
Brianic. So the motion is to vote no.
Yes.
Franklin, Blackwood.
So I'm voting yes to say no, correct?
Yes.
Had to think about that for a minute. Yes.
Hollenberg, yes. Cracker?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right.
I'm sorry, Christopher, did you vote?
I said yes.
Okay. Let's go on to the third item here under unfinished business, fire and EMS commission, second half of additional invoice. This is the $26,654. I think what happened is last time.
Keeping this on the agenda.
Yeah. We, we paid, so that, that number would have been, what, 53, 56,000? Oh yeah, that's right, we paid 30, so we owed 26. Do we want to do anything?
So here's my dilemma. They're not giving us the service we've already paid for. They're already taking out a line of credit, taking out loans. Our $26,000 isn't even going to go close to covering anything that they've got coming up. So do we make a stand on this and not pay until they start, until the commission starts meeting on a regular basis and doing their job?
Chris, do we know if the.
Or do we go into the new election paid in full?
Do we know if the fire department ever got paid for the first quarter?
I believe, I believe they did, but I can double check.
Because we do have some individuals who are doing their job.
Is, you know, and I'm kind of going off the side here, but with the bank and a line of credit, that obligation, is that borne by all, well, for the communities now? Or in proportion to our equalized value?
Yep.
Technically, it's five because the line of credit was actually taken out when Oakland was still.
But it was increased after Oakland.
It was increased after. Do, do we, and I can't remember, and I know you have some of these documents, was it paid off in full before the end of the year?
I don't know that.
Okay.
If, if it wasn't, I don't think there was that much on there according to the treasurer's report.
So this 80-some thousand is January to, roughly to now-ish.
Guess that means we're all on the hook, but it sounds like it's just the four.
Yep, most of the, yeah.
Loans are in current, not from the past, so.
Yeah. Well, then you get into the issue of equal and several liability. And, you know, if this doesn't get paid, the bank can go after one creditor and then let the other, them go after the other creditors to settle up.
We can get in line behind all the other creditors.
That, that's just an observation.
And, and here's my, that argument of our $26,000 isn't going to pay down that $80,000 line of credit we have.
It's not going to cover payroll run, it's not going to cover, I mean, there's a lot of things it's not going to cover.
So do we keep throwing good money after bad? I, I mean, honestly, y'all could convince me to, to, to say yes on paying this if you want to with compelling argument.
Chris, you're thinking it's good faith?
Well, my argument is, you know.
It's an argument?
Not even, yeah, it's not even an argument. It's just the, it's going into this new election and whatever the case is, being paid in full. But then right around the corner, it's going to be second quarter dues, right? When is that coming in? Or has it come in already?
Well, maybe we, we sort of, I don't know, split the baby. We, we give them the $26,000, but then we tell them, this is for our second quarter. We just sort of unilaterally negotiate some kind of a, we're not going to pay you the, the 60.
And does this, I mean, this also in my.
Doesn't help a new commission build a budget or do anything else when they got some villages that haven't paid some bills and they don't know when they're going to get paid and they have to wait for the villages to have medium to pay a bill.
And then does this get included in the, you know, the quote-unquote late fee, you know, for that? I mean, granted, this wasn't a part of the original assessment, but.
So if we pay, if I'm doing my math right, if we, let's say we paid that remaining $26,000, so that would be for first, for just the first quarter, we would have paid over $119,000. And then April, April 1st is when the second quarter bill will be coming. And now, I'm assuming that's, I mean, this hasn't been passed, but then that's going to be.
$119.
It's going to be the 119 again.
And, and how much do we have budgeted?
200.
200.
I believe, roughly. Well, if they pass it, because yes, the 2025 budget will go into effect.
You're right.
And it would actually probably be more because they'd be making a further difference in the first quarter.
So we, we, we.
You might need to hit that referendum.
Yeah, but, but we did not even budget enough to get through two quarters of what our current, what we currently.
What do we want to do with this one, though? $27,000. I'll start with you, Brian.
I'm inclined to delay it to the next vote, that's what I'm inclined to do. But I don't like the fact that we're not, I don't like any of it.
Yeah.
There's not a good, but you put me on the spot, that's, that's what I'm leaning on.
Thank you, you spoke very well, Brian.
Okay, you want to delay. Chris?
As much as I want to be optimistic about a clean slate, I think we can delay it, but it's just going to get added on to the next, next whatever, whatever the second quarter is. It's not going to go away. So just be advised, it's not going to go away.
If we don't, just to give you some numbers, if we don't, and they, this is passed, and the new quarterly payment is the 14788, technically our second quarter payment, if we don't pay this, today then would be $176,351.96.
And then per the IGA, this 26,654 could be, we'd have to incur the late fee of 18%.
How much have, how much have we, how much of what, how much of what, how much of what we budgeted is left?
113 out of 200 is about what, 80,000?
That's all we have left? We've spent 113 already?
That's what she said.
Upon approval of this?
How do we, how do we, wait a minute, how do we pay 113? Because.
We paid the 62, 770, oh four, plus then we paid 30,000.
Which is 92.
If we pay this.
Oh, if we pay this, okay.
Then we would be.
So we've paid 92.
At 119.
And we have, we have, we have 200 budgeted? Okay, now I'm going to, I'm going to blow your minds. But if we write them a check to what we have budgeted and see what they can do to right-size things, and then when they ask us for more than what we had budgeted, that's when we stop paying until they start doing things right. I don't know.
I didn't see that coming.
I'm sure Mr. Hon will say, okay, that's, that's, if that's what Cambridge wants to do, but then once the time comes, we'll, they'll be incurring that 18% in late.
I mean, we, like it, like it or not, whether they had poor planning in assessing Oakland missing, we knew we were going to have to cover it. I think paying, paying this portion of the, the remainder of first quarter can set us up to be, I guess, in good standing with our neighbors to begin with detailed budget types and working together.
Have the other three municipalities all paid?
Rockdale, I know, did.
Rockdale and.
Lake Mills did. I don't know if Kristiana did or not.
Yeah, I think Kristiana did, too.
I think it's inevitable. I think it's just.
It's just another, you know, it's another chess move they could use against Cambridge, saying, well, the other three municipalities paid their, has paid their additional assessment, we're winning on Cambridge.
Do we want to be in the paper again, saying that we don't pay our bills?
It's a fair question, Lucy.
Thank you.
But it's really only pushing it out a few weeks, right? It'll be on the agenda on the 9th, right? There'll be some other things, right? So they should have to answer to that medical director what's going to happen, right? They've got that coming up, so.
Throw out, do we pay this quarter? No, England, the second quarter comes, we're not paying it right away. But we have three months to pay that and look for the answer.
We have 30, 60 days. Once we get it, we have 60 days. So if they get it to us sometime in April, maybe June, so we're paying that one in June. So, so I'd be okay with that. Okay, all right.
That's when we're probably going to have to, like, go out for a loan or.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make them, or I'm going to ask staff to start looking to what it would take for us to get a loan of, you know, $300,000, $400,000 to be able to cover the shortfall that we have in our budget.
All right, but getting back to this, Chris.
I'll make a motion to pay the second half of the additional invoice of $26,654.
I'll second that.
I'm not happy about it.
I know, I'm like biting my tongue out.
I'm not happy about it either, but I mean, Kristen did bring up a good point about, and I think you mentioned it too, just being in good standing as you get started with the new.
With the new, yeah.
Whoever the new people are going to be on the commission, hopefully new people on the commission, hopefully everybody, put the people who are elected officials on the commission instead of having someone who is not elected and not answerable to their tax cares on the commission. So hopefully.
I'm not happy about it either.
But we do have a motion in a second to go ahead and to pay the second half of the additional invoice of $26,654, which is for the first quarter of 2025. That's what we understand the motion to be, correct? All right. Roll call.
Yes.
Come back.
Yes.
No.
Brianic.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Good for you, Brian, for sticking to it.
No, I, we're just going to be dealing with this in two weeks with the next quarter payment. We're all going to be.
Yeah, but the next quarter payment, we've got the 60 days that we can rely on without the, I'm worried. I'm worried at some point that someone's going to invoke the 18%.
I get it, it's just not easy either way, so.
You're right.
We're good.
Okay.
But I, I like that you voted no because that does show that, you know, we, we've got questions about it. We're concerned.
All right, correspondence, I do not see anything.
The letter that you sent us about concerns.
From the EMS employee?
Yes. So is that public record?
EMS employee or was it Shane?
Yeah, Shane from Johnson.
Oh, yes, you won.
Yes, that is public record.
Okay, all right. Because I, I found that to be a very compelling piece of correspondence that I think more people should be.
I agree.
I was, so I don't, I don't know if we add it to the pack or.
I can add it to the pack.
Yeah, because I found that piece of correspondence very, very compelling.
Anything else for correspondence? All right, moving on, questions, referrals, staff, future agenda items, Britton Water Alley bits. Questions regarding burying power lines, that's one. Is there anything else that I want to throw in here?
Are we still talking about the bike trip stuff? Has that been?
No, it hasn't been.
We're working on that.
What the invoice for that will be.
Okay.
A referral for staff, can you look into what it would take for us to do a $400,000 loan? First, we budgeted $200,000. At this point in time, based on the budget that we did not approve, it looks like we'd have to pay $600,000. So we can adjust on there, but if we have to go out for a $400,000 loan, how would we do that? What would that look like? And it would be for paying for fire and EMS services?
I think if we want to start looking into it, we'd need a referendum.
Yeah, can you look into what it would take to, to look into the referendum?
The municipality, and you guys may have seen this on next week's election, there's 13 referendums across the state, eight of which are entirely tied to providing public safety and public safety services. Eight and three are partially tied to.
I believe Juanique was one of them.
Yeah, so we're not the only ones that's across the state somewhere specifically just for that.
And then I was going to add just a reminder, and we touched on it earlier, April 8th will be the final board meeting for the current board. New terms take effect April 15th, so the April 22nd board meeting would be the new board.
Everybody get out and vote.
Yes.
I had one thing for the board, for, probably just as a future agenda item. When I came on the board, we were handing out assignments, right? I took on the Dane County Cities and Villages Association stuff. I get stuff, I get newsletters, they've had a few meetings. I went to a couple of virtual meetings. Here's my question, what's the expectation level of what I can bring back to this onset? Because I'm just letting you know, I'm also at the state level on a whole nother side of all this budget stuff, so it's kind of like I'm wearing one half of, that's what you're hearing, and I already know half of the other stuff. But what I'm asking is that they send out letters and a bunch of information. Want me to just send that to everybody just for awareness or what, you know, a summary? Or what's the expectation level of kind of reporting out for that?
Summary with these.
Report the significant.
That's all I want.
And so just let me know when you have a meeting or something I can put on the agenda. And so just let me know when you have a meeting or something I can put on the agenda.
Fair enough. The last virtual one, I spent most of the time on AI stuff, so I'm sure it wasn't all that interesting. But anyway, that, thank you. And again, I was on that, I should have brought it up before. So just remembering. Thank you.
All right. Upcoming meetings. March 26th of this week, deputy interviews, April 1st is the election, April 8th, Village Board meeting, April 9th, Library Board, April 14th, Plan Commission, April 15th, Water and Sewer, and then again on April 22nd, our final Village Board meeting.
We are missing April 15th. There's also Economic Development Committee.
That's what I was gonna say. Thought I had it on.
Five P, so it's booked, it's 5 o'clock and then Water and Sewer's at 6:30. If you're looking for a good time, you can come to-
We just thought we got Water and Sewer doubled it a little bit.
I like it.
Okay, which brings us up to item 13.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.